I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the meeting for Monday, October the 23rd. If the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Archibald. Councilmember Ashford.
President.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Councilmember Warden.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have the minutes from the regular meeting of October the 9th before you is a motion to receive and file.
So move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lamb. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Meeting minutes will stand as they were submitted. Before we move on to public comment, just a couple of things. One, I'd like to formally congratulate Cindy Johnzick on her promotion as city clerk. She's with us tonight. She's been with us several other times as well, but she actually will officially take over. Sue's child, who has been with the city for 30 years, is retiring this week, and we certainly thank her for all of her years of service. She's been invaluable, and she's a very dedicated public servant. She's not here this evening, but she will be in her office the rest of the week, so if you'd like to wish her well, feel free to do so. But congratulations, Cindy.
Thank you.
And now let's do another one for Sue. Thank you.
And one other thing is, at the end of the meeting, I am going to request that we go into a closed session to discuss a confidential legal opinion, so I just want to throw that out now, but I will need a motion at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
So with that being said, we're going to move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council this evening? Please come forward, give us your name, and you have four minutes to speak. You didn't want to see us go without anybody, right?
Good evening, Mayor Rep, City Council, Mr. Freed, Mark Neal, 3045 Monticello Drive, Port Huron. I'm here on behalf of the McMorn Authority, looking for your support on Resolution Number Four. It shows that it's removal and reconstruction of the new concession stand in the theater When we decided to put new carpet down, we took a look at the concession stand, which was right, basically, in the middle of the lobby of the theater, and it was a sort of a choke point. We said, if we're going to do it, we better do it now. So we did so. We moved back into the old sound booth and utilized and cut out a new concession stand out there, which makes the flow a lot better in the lobby. So we'd appreciate your support. We currently are covering that out of the capital funds that you provide us on an annual basis. So I'll be around if you have any other questions, but we'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening? Seeing no one, I'll declare public comment closed, and we will move on to communications and petitions.
Receive and file notification from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission to transfer ownership of a 2017 Class C and SDM licensed business with Sunday sales permit and outdoor service from Pompeii of Port Huron Incorporated to Pompeii's Eatery Incorporated, 1120 Military Street.
Is there a motion to receive and file?
So move.
Mayor Protem Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lamb. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Warden.
This is going to be utilized at the same address, just change name there, corporation?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
There's no other questions or discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Move on to Resolution Number One, please.
Approving the agreement with DLZ Michigan Incorporated for professional engineering services for rehabilitation of the 10th Street Bridge.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Mayor Protem Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Madam Mayor, if you recall from your last council meeting, you approved a more than $2 million contract for the rehabilitation of the 10th Street Bridge. We also are responsible for the engineering portion, which is historically normal for these types of projects. If you have any questions about the engineering agreement before you, Lenny's here to answer those, but this is a standard M dot engineering contract that goes along with any type of M dot contract.
Thank you. Is there any discussion questions?
Mayor Rep, is there any additional fees from last meeting to this meeting for these cost or burden that we're going to be as a city of Port Huron?
Correct. If you look at your agreement, the engineering costs, we, as the city of Port Huron, will actually pay, which is normal. Lenny, can you speak to the engineering cost of the contract? I believe the total is about $22,000.
It is.
Or just the engineering.
Madam Mayor, Council, the engineering costs have already been spent. This remaining component is for the construction engineering, which is the inspection and, after-design component of the work. We were not, the scope for the CE work was not well-defined as part of the design. Once the design was finished, that's when we could do the actual construction phase services, and that's what is included in this contract.
Lenny, the total cost for the entire contract, in addition to this RFPs and shop drawings of 22,000, the total cost is $81,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That'll be paid for out of Act 51 funding?
Yes.
Okay. So it'll be paid for out of designated Act 51 funding, not general fund money, which is our streets allocation from the state.
Any further discussion or questions? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Resolution Number Two, please.
Approving the contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation for installation of pedestrian signing and pavement marking within the trunk line roadway in the downtown area.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Councilmember Lamb, seconded by Mayor Protem Ashford. Is there any discussion, questions?
Madam Mayor, as you will notice on the corner of, I believe it is Beards and Huron, and also Court Street and Military, we installed some pedestrian walkway signs to do a pilot program on some extra signs for pedestrian ways. On Court Street and on Beards, those are some of our most heavily populated crosswalks in the city. We also installed some on Stone Street by McLaren Hospital. When they're in the M dot road right away, which is M 25 trunk line, we need essentially an agreement with them to place them there, and so we had conditionary improvement before we installed them, and this is a formal improvement, approving an agreement with M dot to put those pedestrian signs there.
And those are working quite well, are they not?
Yeah, they're actually working surprisingly well. Now, we will remove them in the wintertime because of snow removal, it's hard to run a belly blade on a truck down the street there with that in the center, so they will be removed in the wintertime, but so far, it's working out well. I spoke with the CEO and the vice president of McLaren Hospital, and also with some of the employees, and it is working out well. It just kind of gives them a moment of pause. But again, this is just the formal acknowledgement from M dot that those are in their road right away. We did bear the cost for those, which came out of the traffic services and the major streets fund.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mayor, I just have a comment. I, being at the hospital, had several people that did notice them, and they questioned me on them, so I gave them a little brief explanation, but they were very positive. They liked them, they thought they worked well.
Excellent. Any other discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Warden.
Just reading through the contract, this is, I just wanted to know, does this, doesn't really have like an expiration? Is this, once we agree to this, we can do this year after year, year after year?
Correct.
As long as we're utilizing the same and notify them?
Correct.
So, okay. Thank you, that's good.
Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Resolution Number Three.
Authorizing the allocation of 2016 and 2017 home community housing development organization funds according to St. Clair Nonprofit Housing Corporation's proposal to acquire, rehabilitate, and resell 718 Johnstone Street to a moderate income purchaser.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Mayor Protem Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor, as you are all familiar with, the Port Huron Housing Corporation does rehabs of homes in our community throughout the city, and then sells them to moderate low-income families. As required of our HUD home funds, we require that 15 percent of our annual allocation be essentially set up to a third-party housing group, like the St. Clair Housing Corporation, to also rehabilitate a home and sell it to a low-to-moder income family. We oftentimes use our Pioneer Home Buyer Program to do financial literacy courses and education courses to make this happen. I emailed you a briefing on one of our most recent habs for the Port Huron Housing Corporation about last Friday. I think I sent you a briefing and some photos of that remodel. This is essentially a project extremely similar to that, but essentially, it's a third-party to meet our 15 percent requirement under the home funds.
Thank you. Any other, any discussion from council?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Warden.
The 15 percent requirements on our annual allocated amount, is that what that, why we're, can you explain what you're trying to fulfill the 15 percent as a $75,000?
Yeah, so of our entire home funds, which we receive from HUDs, 15 percent, which is about $75,000, needs to be allocated to a third-party, like the St. Clair County Housing Corporation, to do a project for low-to-moder income, and this is meeting that needs.
Okay, so this will be our allocation for '16 to '17?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, Councilmember Harris.
Just one question. Will this property, when it's finished, be available under that urban pioneer program?
Hopefully so, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
No further discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Resolution Four, please.
Authorizing payment to Ward Construction Company in the amount of $21,634.84 for the removal and reconstruction of a new concession area in the McMorn Theater Lobby.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Harris, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Madam Mayor, if I could, just a quick explanation. I appreciate the McMorn Authority Chairman Mark Neal coming tonight to give us a brief explanation. When we were installing new carpet into the McMorn main, what'd you call that, the lobby, the snack bar was in the middle, it was needing to be moved. We sought out numerous bids. We had one contractor who was able to come and to do the demolition and start the reconstruction, which is Ward Construction, which is also the lowest bidder on our pavilion project at Lakeside Park, a contractor we've done much work with. The McMorn Authority approved this project out of the capital funds we already allotted. So this is funding that we already allotted, that the authority has used their discretion to approve on, but they did move the snack bar, which I would encourage you, I think we set up a special meeting, was that November?
November 1st.
November 1st for the council, have a special meeting at McMorn, and a tour will be facilitated to allow you to see this work, but it is remarkable what they were able to achieve for that price and to create a whole new flow and work there. When you dig into an old building, there's plumbing, there's electrical, there's a lot of things that kind of come up that you just don't know about, and I will say, one of the benefits of using a local contractor like Ward Construction is they worked very well with Nancy and the authority to make sure that this project came in as a very cost-effective program, and so I look forward to you all seeing that. Mark, I appreciate you coming to offer explanation.
Any questions from council, discussion? Yes, Councilmember Harris.
Mark said he would just love to get back up here again. I was just going to ask him, at the last McMorn meeting, we went out and took a look at it, and it wasn't quite finished yet, and I just wondered, you know, are we satisfied with how it turned out?
You could do it as a duo.
We'll let Mark come up.
You can both do it. A duo.
Mayor, City Council, the work that is pretty close to being completed, we're about 90 percent now. We were just waiting for the roll-up door, that it was kind of a special order to come in, and some finish work on some of the lighting, but it was usable this weekend, and I've been assured that, they're hoping in the next week, that door will come in and it'll be completed, so.
So our refreshment supervisor, Terry, likes it?
She likes it.
Good.
She's getting used to it. But she does like it, and it's very nice. It's going to be very nice for the theater.
I think it's a plus, but like.
Yeah, it's going to be an asset for us, and hopefully, it'll be done by.
By the tour, November 1st, that would be nice.
We'll have Nancy lean on them a little bit.
Yeah. It's the McMorn people.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I just want to thank Mark and the authority for, you know, we approved the $250,000 of capital expenditures in McMorn. I think it was about a year ago? Was that about a year ago today?
Yeah.
And the good stewardship, the accountability and oversight that the authority has been able to provide with the expenditures of those funds. When people walk into McMorn, there is a significant noticeable change in the appearance, the feel, the modern look of the facility, that still takes into effect the character of that historic building, and that's not by coincidence, that's by intention from the authority. Mark, I appreciate, I know, you don't get paid for this job. I always tell people, it's like, someone asked me, how much does the McMorn Authority Chairman make? I said, zero. He literally volunteers us, and the amount of oversight to make sure that these projects get done on time, under budget, and held accountable is what keeps these costs low, and you've done a great job of that, and I just want to thank you publicly for that. I want to thank you for protecting the character of that building, but also making sure that we bring it in the 21st century, and I know when we brought this to council last year, $250,000, we discussed about being good stewards of the people's money, and you have done just that, so thank you, and I know Nancy appreciates it as well.
We look forward to showing it off next week, too, so.
Yes, we look forward to the tour. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
I just had a quick question on this. Is it, this $21,000 is the final payment, or are you guys, you said you're still waiting on door installation or something?
Yes, the, that is the final on the labor, but we do have one more payment. I think the door's $3,000, because it's a specialty door on the.
And they're going to install it?
So it'll be under the threshold, so that's why it's not on there.
Okay, so this is done with, completed?
Yes.
For the contract?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to ordinances.
Second reading and enactment, an ordinance to amend Chapter 52 zoning, Article 4, General and Supplementary Regulations, Section 52-677, parking and storage of recreation vehicles, campers, travel trailers, and boats of the Port Huron Code of Ordinances to allow front yard driveway parking from May 1st to October 31st.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Councilmember Lamb, Mayor Protem Ashford. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor, just want to point out, I talked with the planning director, David Haynes, this afternoon. The effective date is October 31st. We know that it is unreasonable to think that we can properly notify the entire city by October 31st of the new rules and changes, so I want to be very clear, the enforcement of this new ordinance will not take effect until next fall. We are not, we do not think we're going to be able to properly notify everybody, and so it is going to be loosely, if not enforced, until next fall, when people shove their boats and RVs taken care of by then. We think that's to be fair and in good spirit with the intention of this ordinance, the intention of council.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor Protem Ashford.
So how is that supposed to be communicated to the affected parties that may fall into this?
We'll essentially send warning tickets out, like, hey, next fall, make sure this is taken care of, so instead of writing a full-fledged ticket.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Rep.
Mayor Rep.
Yep, I just have a quick question to see if there was any communication or responses from any of our residents or people in the city since the first reading?
We have received none, Councilman. Councilman Warden, we have received none.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Mayor Rep, I don't like to spoil an occasion, but I looked back here, you know, this really, it's kind of, no, really, it's kind of piqued my interest, you know, and I said, you know, we've just, we've discussed something similar to this, and so I looked back here, in October 10th of 2016, we talked about almost the same thing, except we didn't talk about the summertime parking issue and stuff, about parking in the front yards and things like that, and back then, it had some parameters around, basically, how far it can be from a property line and things like that, which this doesn't include in. And I really don't have an issue with people having these in the yards, but the thing with this document here, it allows people to expand on it, to put another sheet of concrete in next to their driveway and add to that, and it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't have any regards to parameters on property lines and stuff like that. It's like I mentioned at the last meeting, and I looked around the neighborhood with our 45-foot lots and our 47-foot lots and things like that. If you put a motorhome like this, you're going to be right on the property line, and I know in the past, in 2016, when we discussed some of this stuff, it talks, talked about being three feet from the property line and things like that, and I hope, I mean, I'm sure this is going to pass tonight, but I just hope maybe within, between now and next summer, that the Planning Commission can meet and address some of these little concerns that I think can be addressed with the city of Port, you know, with this ordinance. You know, it's, Port Huron is kind of different, you know, we have the old community, which has the small lots, and we have the newer part of the communities, which had 50-foot lots, 75-foot lots and things like that, and it really, it really makes a difference, and I think what, we took some of the stuff off, you know, some of the comments from October 10th of 2016 were basically tabled because of the concerns of council and stuff, and Councilmember Archibald brought it up, and we talked about some of these things, and I'm just kind of concerned that I think it's something that we have to touch base on next year to find a tune in this, because I don't want to turn Port Huron front yards into parking lots.
Madam Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
I think Councilman Harris brings up a good point. What we'll do is, I will direct the planning department over the next 12 months to take field notes of how this, yeah, come on up, David, to look at how this plays out, and with the field notes, we will bring back to the Planning Commission essentially real-life situations, what's going on, so they can review that in 12 months.
And to council and mayor, to your point, under 3A, we do have the requirement of a three-foot setback off of the rear yard and also interior side yard. If it's a corner lot, there's a 12-and-a-half-foot setback, along with setbacks to any of the property and building lines of the adjacent properties, and also, if they do go for any additional concrete or pad, they would, again, have to go through the permit process and be approved and fall within our confines of our current zoning in order to even install an additional pad.
Yeah. Well, I guess my concern was the three-foot that's in here, it refers only to the rear yard, the rear property.
Or interior side yard, or if it's on a corner lot, you have a 12-and-a-half-foot setback from.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there another question?
Double check, if you could. So all of Mr. Harris's concerns are addressed in this?
Yes.
Side lots, back lots, all concerns, as he's specified.
They would have to conform to our setbacks.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Is there any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. That concludes the regular part of our agenda. Before we move and ask for a motion for a closed session, I just have a couple of announcements. Leaf pickup at the curb begins the week of October 30th, which is next week. The program is the same as last year, using a two-zone alternating week pickup process. A newsletter with more details has been mailed to all residents. If you did not get one and have any questions, you certainly can contact either the city clerk's office at 984-9725, or the Public Works Department at 984-9730. And just so everybody knows, the city manager put a little blue thing in front of us tonight. It's kind of a caption of our general fund, so if anybody can kind of carry it with you, so if you have any questions from the public and they ask you about our budget, this kind of lays it out for you so that you know exactly what it is, so you can carry it with you. Also, I would like to thank the Parks and Rec for their cooperative effort with the Lions Club this weekend on the Oktoberfest. That was a nice first event. I think that's the first time they've held it, and I was down there for a while, so it's always nice to see cooperative efforts between our McMorn Parks and Rec and the Lions Club, and any club in Port Huron, so. Before I ask some, if we could have a motion to go into an executive session, is there anything else to be brought before the council?
Yes, Mayor Rep, I would just like to, we are having two meetings, open the transit, Blue Water Transit, and we're discussing the facility needs and potential sites for the new train station. We don't know where that is now, but I actually brought, asked for copies of the presentation so the council members could be aware, and there is another one that's coming up Wednesday, the 26th.
It's Thursday.
I mean, Thursday, I'm sorry. The 20, Thursday's 26th.
26th, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But I'd just like to highlight some notes that I took. This whole process that we're dealing with now, and by the way, we have actually communicated this to our public via radio, the newspaper did a wonderful article, front page, and it's been out there in the community, so nobody is saying they've been left out at this point or anything, and we just want you to know, you still have an opportunity on Thursday to come, it's at 6 o'clock, and it's at the, what do you call it, the?
Dodge.
The Dodge Hall, over at the St. Clair County Building. So these are just eight points, I just want you to, to lodge in on, I talked to someone on the committee to get some of this information. So this is the very beginning of the process, and it's kind of being pinned as a stakeholders' engagement, so that's what we want you to know. So the Transit Board, we got this grant, and it pushed us back to square one in terms of, we got to come to the public first, so this is not, even if they said they had this site that was a favorable site or whatever, well, everything is open. We have to do this in order, in order to comply with the grant, okay? And no site has been selected, and no potential site identified by the public will be excluded from this initial process. And I want to say that again, because some people are kind of like jumping ahead, things like, this is already laid out, and it's not. So no site has been selected, and no potential site identified by the public will be excluded from this initial process. And number two, the public is being asked by the consultant, who is Bergman, additional sites that would, that would like to be investigated. So you're on. If the city of Port Huron is in the city of Port Huron now, if our manager, who is in charge of our city, should so happen to see or anybody within here that there are other are other sites that are out there that are available, that are attractive enough that we want to go after, and, and we want to put that on, 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 on the list, then so be it, you have opportunity to do that. And it's my understanding, number three, that Bergman, who is our consultant, has stressed that the NEPA, National Environmental Protection Process, will be involved in all of this as, as a whole when we do do the site checks. And number four, the site that the community selects will be chosen during the NE, the NEPA process and not during this initial study. So just don't get it backwards, because I know we got some talking points where, you know, someone have concerns and, and all this kind of stuff. We're not at the concern. This is just exploratory, fact-finding. You're just bringing it in. So instead of spending your energies on trying to knock something down that's not there yet, it's, it's just waste. So don't waste that kind of effort on this. We're trying to get all that we can to, to work with, with the consultant. And it was stressed also that the federal government wants return on their investment. The feds will not fund to move any station unless we, we, as a community, select, select it, select that we think that is worth, and we can prove it. So whatever we select, we have to prove it. And MDOT and Amtrak will be consulted, but this is a community project. And MDOT and Amtrak potential needs will not dictate our station location. So that's not, they, they have skin in the game, but they won't dictate where the location, based upon the public's selection, will be, will be identified. So I understand, I have not seen it yet. A timeline has been, has been made available, so, and that timeline is estimated four to five years from now. So again, this is just exploratory, fact-finding, so it's not nothing, we jump up that somebody's gonna get something that we got, and we don't have anything yet. We're still trying to put this together. So I just want to make that clear, and you have the slides in front of you, and you're more than welcome to be there on Thursday at 6 o'clock and get the, you know, the front, the front, frontline scoop on it. And I'm sure, you know, if you have any questions, they could answer them for you. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Rep.
Thank you. It's, yes.
Mayor Rep, I just wanted to say that, you know, this is the first year that Port Huron Minor Hockey Association has tried a Silver Stick Regional. And although the numbers were a little bit small and stuff, but we had an event, McMorn was busy all, all three days, Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday, a few games out to Glacier Point, and I think it's just, just kind of a start early in the season for hockey people to get involved, get serious, but it went over well, and hopefully it'll grow, so I think we need to thank the Port Huron and the volunteers that showed up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Warden.
I just wanted, I appreciate Councilwoman Ashford. Are we as a, since this can be anywhere, maybe even outside the city limits, are we, are we making sure, we putting, are we putting anything together as far as a group and a presence of where we, if we would want it to be in the city in Port Huron and where? I don't know if the city manager, if you're gonna, if you're directly involved in this a lot, or if we can get any help for, should we step in in that fashion and potentially, potentially voice for the, for the City of Port Huron, so.
Before James speak, yeah, it is under the auspices of the Blue Water Transit Agency, okay? That's us, and I'm your representative. And yes, if you're a city manager, that is his, his lane, and he goes in there, if he finds opportunities that can exist for us as a city, that's what he does.
Councilman Warden, I appreciate, Councilman Ashford for mentioning that. So from a city perspective, what I have met with Dave McElroy and Jim Wilson, the head of Blue Water Transit, essentially saying, our concern first and foremost is, and I appreciate this study, this is, this is a welcome step that the Transit Authority has taken. Essentially, before we make decisions, let's have a conversation as a community. And the Blue Water Transit Authority, with their consultant, the Amtrak, have really gone to great measures to hold numerous public hearings, to get public input. I encouraged them at their last meeting, don't just hold a public hearing in the Dodge Auditorium. To communicate with that community and to that population, you need to go to that community and go to that population, meet with the neighbors, meet with the community stakeholders there. We have a lot of very well-organized and engaged civic organizations on the south side of the community who view that as a vital economic asset. As a city manager, I view Amtrak as a huge asset for our city. We are very proud to be called a Amtrak community. We have, not only does it serve our, our day-to-day population of travelers, but it also brings home our college students on holidays to visit their family, it brings our executives in to visit their shops in the industrial park. And so as the city perspective is, we believe that the Amtrak is a economic driver for our community, not only is it an economic driver, but we believe it's a social justice issue to provide equity in transportation to all of our population. So how do we, as a community, continue to leverage our Amtrak station to the fullest economic ability we have? How do we ensure equity and social justice in the placement of that station? And how do we work as good stakeholders to address any shortcomings our current station or future station may have? So really, right now, I, I, I met with the Blue Water Transit Authority, I went to the public hearing, and I, I'm just very pleased that they're not talking at us, the consultants are not talking at us, Amtrak is not talking at us, they're listening. And I always find that good public policy comes from that first step of listening. And that's where we're at right now, and so I appreciate everyone taking the time to hear out the community, and we'll let that play out, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you. And I had a, another, just a comment, similar to Councilmember Harris, I did have a chance to, number one, I think the week prior, International Symphony Orchestra at the McMorn Theater was, first time for me, and it was absolutely incredible, the sound and acoustics in that theater when they set it up that way, it is unreal. And I got to tell you, that was a first-class event there that we have right here in the City of Port Huron, and I want to thank them for that, letting us know that that was an opening night there, and was amazing. The Silver Stick, the local Silver Stick Committee and the Port Huron Minor Hockey Association, just to clarify, I'm very proud of what they've done. This is actually, for kids, boys and girls, that are basically at the house league level, they have not had a qualifying or some type of a tournament that they could go to, to try to, to win and advance to the International Silver Stick Finals, which we host here on certain levels. And this is something that is, you know, huge advocacy for the, for the kids and the youth, and they've created this, I thought it was a good turnout, I was able to show up there, and, and I think it'll only grow, but a lot of compliments to them to create someplace as a need to allow more kids to be, have, just to have that chance to, to participate in the Silver Stick International Tournament. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I neglected mentioning before, too, because I kind of forgot about it, but Councilmember Archibald is not here tonight because she's at a training session for her job, so it's no reason for her absence. I'd ask now, somebody please make a motion to go into an closed session to discuss a confidential legal opinion, and, are you making that motion, Mayor Protem Ashford?
Executive session.
And we are going to room 101, and we do have to then reconvene to adjourn for the night, but no, we're not going to probably come back to this room for that, we'll do it in that, in that place. Yep. And seconded by Councilmember Ruiz, and we do have to take a roll call vote for this.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Thanks for the pen, the EDA pen?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm gonna react, so.
You gotta get the right things in the right place, don't you?
I mean, good, come on, we chat.
I'm just saying, for a new station.
Thank you.
Open up, appear many.
Sure do.